County Board of Supervisors, May 11th, 2020, Board Meeting to Order. We will have our invocation and our Pledge of Allegion by Supervisor Lockwood, please. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you first and foremost for allowing us to live in this beautiful place in Kent County. As we come together tonight, do your work for our fellow citizens. Let us always be guided by your hand with wisdom, compassion, and clarity. Do what's best for the folks in our area. Also, let us always keep in mind that the work we do is always meaningful when it's consistent with your will. We ask these things when Christ our Savior is with us.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Lockwood. We're going to have the roll call by Ms. Watkins.
Mr. Evelyn. Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
Here.
Thank you. A couple of things I wanted to announce, and that is regretfully Supervisor Evelyn will not be here. He has a very serious family crisis going on, so he is with his family. And as we say, family is first. And so we ask your prayers for him and his family during this time. And also, we are being screened at the door by fire and rescue, so they are taking out temperatures, asking us all these questions. And so we want to be so that you can hear us, and there are times when we've gotten the comments that we sound muffled. So we are practicing social distancing, but we are not wearing masks, and that is the reason why. So as we continue on with our meeting, we will now review the or have comments on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Steers.
Yes, Mr. Steers.
Madam Chair, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and that is made a part of the record.
Thank you Supervisor Steers. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Evelyn. Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
And Ms. Page.
Aye. We have a special recognition today, and that is in the form of a resolution, which is R-21-20. And this resolution recognizes on May 2020 as Older Americans Month in New Kent County. And it states that whereas New Kent County, Virginia is almost has almost 5,000 residents, age 60 and over, older, who enrich communities through diverse life experiences that make a mark. And whereas May is recognized as Ola Americans Month by the United States Administration for Community Living and the Virginia Department of Aging and Rehabilitation Services as a time to recognize the contributions of older residents and the many ways they make marks in our communities. And whereas the 2020 theme for Ola American Month is Make Your Mark, which emphasizes the importance of encouraging and recognizing the countless contributions that older residents make to families and communities. And whereas the 2020 observation of Ola Americans Month is also a time of national crises in response to the COVID-19 that impacts all ages as we seek to keep communities safe and healthy while recognizing the need to check on the well-being of older residents. And whereas New Kent County, Senior Connections, and other local agencies are committed to strengthening communities by connecting with and supporting older residents, caregivers, and families by acknowledging their many valuable contributions. And whereas New Kent County, Senior Connections, and local agencies recognize the importance of bringing together all generations and promoting activities that enhance physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. And whereas Senior Connections joins with the New Kent County, the New Kent Department of Social Services, Department of Parks and Recreation, and other groups to ensure that residents have supportive and protective services at every age to allow them to enjoy the best possible quality of life. And whereas New Kent County, Senior Connections, and local groups can enhance the lives of older residents in our communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the New Kent County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May 2020 to be Ola Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our communities who make a mark. Dated this 13th day of April 2020, signed by Rodney Hathaway, Kent Administrator, yours truly, Board Chairwoman. So we thank you for the many contributions that our older Americans make. Also, when they talk about our local groups, we're also talking about Triad, Senior Connections, our Connections Cafe. And so we ask that, especially during this time, we are our brother's keeper, so we'll look out for our older residents especially. So we move on to citizens' comment period. Thank you, Dan, by way of Mr. Hathaway. No one signed up, so we'll close citizen comment period. Vida is not here, however, if they are listening, for your listening pleasure, I was asked to request a Vida to scrape St. Peter's Church gravel road. They've been doing work over there and doing ditches. And so on behalf of Mr. Evelyn, I ask that they do scrape that road, and I guess they got a lot of potholes over there, and I'll be also sending an email to them on tomorrow. Does anyone else want to do anything for their listening pleasure, or you're just going to email them? Just email them? All right. So we move down for our presentations. And our presentations tonight are coming through to us by way of Zoom, and it will be on behalf of the VCU Health New Kent Emergency Center update.
I see thumbs up. There we go. Good evening.
Good evening.
So welcome to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors meeting here. We are all excited to hear about VCU Health, and so we thank you for joining our meeting. If you want to introduce yourself and go on with your presentation, we're delighted.
Sure, I'll start, but then I'd like to hand things over to Dr. Denza and Dr. Dodd. My name is Melinda Hancock. I'm the Chief Administrative and Financial Officer for VCU Health, and it's a true pleasure to join you tonight, and thanks for having us. We're very excited to be here, and I know it probably feels like a bit coming, but we are super pleased and super honored to be here. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Denza. I think he's muted.
Dr. Denza?
This is Dr. Dodd, are you able to hear me?
Yes, Dr. Dodd can hear me.
Thanks, thanks for having us tonight. I'm Lisa Dodd, I'm the Medical Director for the Freestanding ER at New Kent. We are excited to be joining you all in your community to help provide improved health services to the area, and we'll answer any questions that you all have. As you all know, we are open in June 1st. We'll have 12 rooms, 12 exam rooms, and we'll be able to provide any services that a normal emergency room does.
Do we have any questions?
Is there any way to master unmute, Dr. Denza?
It's on mute here. How about that? All right, great. Yeah, my name is Herinder Denza, I'm the Chief of Emergency Medicine over at VCU at the main campus, and just wanted to thank you for having us here today. We are, just to echo what both Melinda and Lisa have said, we are very excited about the opportunity to get the freestanding ED open. It's been a long time in the coming, and had a lot of preparations and unexpected delay, but we're very, very excited to get started. So thanks for having us here. We're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from the board?
The grand opening is on June 1st. Is there a time set for, is there ribbon cutting?
The question was the grand opening is June the 1st. Is there, has a time been set for that day for the ribbon cutting?
We're still determining what it's going to look like as far as the opening goes. I think obviously, given where we are with the pandemic, I think it's going to be, we're going to have to work through what an opening would look like. We're going to open for business on June 1st, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Dodd and Dr. Denza, what that looks for, looks like. So we want to determine perhaps a virtual tour, a virtual ribbon cutting. That's new to us, so we're working through that concept with our marketing team and our communications team, so we'll get back to you on what the virtual would look like. And of course, later in the year, be open for potentially some tours as well, but I'll let Dr. Denza and Dr. Dodd talk about what the, it's just going to open on June 1st, but we will have a virtual tour available.
And on June 1st, we plan on being open full service at 7:00 AM.
At 7:00 AM, 7:00 AM. Did you want to explain a little bit about some of the services that you're going to render?
So in the ER, we will provide any services like you would see in a normal emergency room. It'll be staffed by a board-certified emergency medicine physician. We will have emergency room nurses that be able to take care of any of the normal medical emergencies. Anything that would require admission to a hospital, because we are a freestanding ER, will require us to transfer you to the downtown campus, but outside of that, we can start any kind of therapy, whether it be for heart attacks, stroke, orthopedic injuries, any kind of medical condition, those kind of things.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I would just also add, we'll also be open for pediatric emergency services as well.
And you will be open for walk, you said walk-ins? Emergency walk-ins, not a patient-first type or a med-first type?
Correct. After the opening on June 1st at 7:00 AM, we will be open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We won't take appointments. Patients will be prioritized by their medical conditions, and you will be seen in that order, but we do not take appointments.
Okay, thank you. Well, we don't seem to have any more questions. We are excitedly awaiting your arrival. We're getting the word out in New Kent. Everybody was excited to see on the news that you're coming to New Kent, and so we'll be waiting to see you on June the 1st. We thank you for all the work that you do, and especially during this time, and thank you for taking the time out to join us this evening.
Absolutely, and if I can add one more thing, I just wanted to make you all aware, we will also have outpatient radiology and labs. So if you need labs drawn, you'll be able to come there and go directly to the lab or x-rays, CAT scans, ultrasounds, you'll be able to come to the facility through the outpatient entrance and get those during Monday through Friday during normal business hours. So that'll be another added service to the community. You won't have to go downtown or to any other location, travel to get those services that your doctors may order.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, well, thank you for joining us, and we hope to see you again soon.
You will, thank you.
Thank you all.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Well, that was a new experience for us.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at.
So hopefully, we won't be going through this long enough to become experts. So our second item on the agenda is our Economic Development Authority presentation for COVID-19 Recovery Loan Program, and that will be presented by EDA Chairman, Mr. Charles Davis, and our Economic Development Director, Mr. Matt Smalnick. And also, I think chairing that actual subcommittee will be Mr. Matt Starr.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you, sir?
I'm very good. Thank you for having me. I'm not usually considered essential, so it's kind of nice to get ordered to come out of the house. The EDA, as you know, has a mission to support local businesses and to bring economic growth or help stimulate economic growth to the county. It's come to our attention that there may be a segment of small businesses in the county. Obviously, there's a segment that's hurting, but there may be a segment that has not been getting incentives that were specifically allocated by the federal or state government. And it's our goal to come up with some sort of a program that may help stimulate them, help them in their time of need. I think this was patterned, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, after the Hurricane Irene relief effort, the EDA came up with a loan program. And so I think you've been handed the packet, it gives some of the basic breakdown of that, what we proposed, and we're not alone in this. We're seeing it from some of our neighboring localities, Fluvana, Stafford, Albemarle, have all come up with a program very similar to this. And so the board has met, our board has met, and we've come up with some of those parameters that we feel like fit the bill for New Kent and are kind of catered to our county here. So we're seeking your input, but most importantly, just like everything else, it comes down to funding. We have about $134,000 in our appropriated funds balance that is, very thankfully, was appropriated by your board for use as a business incentive grant program. We propose or are proposing to take $50,000 out of that program and move those funds to a pot of money that we could dole out as loans to small businesses that need it. The loans would be over a period of two years max to be repaid, and we're proposing a maximum of $5,000 to those businesses. The board has come up with some application process and criteria, and would appreciate any comments that you have.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Starr, you did say the maximum was 5,000?
That's the proposal, yes, sir.
Okay, so if a business needed 10,000, you'll loan them 5,000?
That's right.
Okay.
We don't have, I think to be, to equally distribute this amongst the people, we really don't know what kind of response we're going to get, and I guess I may be back here at the board if we have a tremendous response, but we're just trying to gauge that on what we think we may, we think we may get.
Well, I personally think this is a fantastic program that you guys have come up with. I mean, it's, I know EDA does a lot to encourage businesses to come to the community, and to see you step forward and to take care of the businesses that are here in the community means a lot to us. We appreciate it.
That's our concern, is we feel it just as equal, is if not more so, to support the businesses we have here as well as to bring new business in.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lockwood, did you have something?
Yes, ma'am, here. Who's going to be vetting the folks for these loans? And I'm reading through the application process, it's more like a registration than application.
We were hoping you would do it, Mr. Lockwood.
I'm all for helping out our businesses, but if we're going to call it a loan, then shouldn't we know that these loans are able to be paid back and that they have the means to do so or some sort of?
Administratively, we feel like we can handle that internally. The Economic Development Chair or Director and his staff should be able to facilitate that part of it. We spent a lot of time discussing how we come up with the parameters for who gets approved and who doesn't, and we talked about everything from giving a pint of blood to you name it, but in the end, you know, this is $5,000, and these people are hurting, and we are also sensitive to the time issue. And so we don't feel like we've got enough time to go through two years worth of tax returns or bank statements, or whether it's even necessarily warranted for $5,000. So these people will be signing a personal guarantor for that money for their company.
So they will be signing a personal guarantee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't see that.
All right. So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that you had the program before, I guess Mr. Smalnick was on it, I know Mr. Davis was on it, and it was very well received, and.
For the most part, I think that we didn't have any trouble getting the money back.
Okay.
That's right.
Well, personally, I want to thank you, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for, you know, reaching out, doing, I know everything came out with this SBA, and I don't want to mess up anybody's loan by the SBA, but thank you for taking care of our own as best we can. I know Mr. Steers wants you to go and give him the whole 10,000 right now so you don't have to come back, but we'll see how the $5,000 goes first, and so we look forward to getting an update about that.
We thank you too for making it all possible. Obviously, we couldn't do what we do without you guys sending the money our way, so we're very appreciative.
Thank you. Thank you for supporting our businesses, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Davis. So item three is a request for authorization to enter into a contract for a new HVAC system. I think, Mr. Hathaway, you might want to talk about this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Before you, you have a request, again, for authorization to enter into a contract, not for a new HVAC system, but for the engineering and design that would go into the procurement of a new HVAC system. We're working with CHA Companies, they're a mechanical engineering firm, and we'd like to, we've received a proposal from them to develop a design for the county administration building and to assist us, lead us in the procurement process to move forward to the next phase, which would be construction. A little bit about the need, this is a system in this building that has been plagued with problems since installation, so much so that it's at a state right now that it is not operating at 100% efficiency. We've kind of have piecemealed it together to get us by the current season, but I'm definitely very concerned as we get warmer, as the climate gets warmer. I am recommending that we enter into contract, we're CHA's company, and I'm sorry, I missed the important component of what they proposed too, not only design and procurement, but also construction management. And I think that that's probably an area where we fell a little short with previous HVAC projects, but they will be here and will be going behind the contractors as they install the system too. Is that why it's warm in here this evening, or is it just? Well, actually, in this particular room, it's on a separate HVAC system. It's not controlled by the system that fuels the rest of the building, so I'll check the controls for you.
Any questions of Mr. Hathaway?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
Rodney, in the list that goes A through O, I guess it's I where it says, "Review existing roof structure framing for adequacy of new rooftop units." If they find, they get to that point, what does that go do to the $150,000? Is that, are they considering that in that cost, or would that be a possibility of a major addition?
Well, the contracted price for the engineering design is, sorry, I just lost it, $66,500 rounded out, and I'll get that number for you. But we are proposing a different type of system that would involve mechanical units on the roof, and in order to place mechanical units on the roof, we have to do an analysis of the roof structure. If we find that the roof cannot support in HVAC units, there are some things that we can do to beef up the roof structure, the integrity. Of course, that would come with the price, and that would be part of the plan that CHA would put together.
Because originally, didn't we talk about a tower on the roof? Was that something we spoke about at a previous meeting?
We do feel that that is the best way to go. Right now, we have a variable refrigerant system, and there's two towers behind this building on the ground. We've learned, and I wasn't involved when the decisions were being made to install that system, but we've learned that, or I've learned, that that system works very good in open areas, big warehouses, where there's not a lot of turns as far as the piping system and vent work. In this building, we have a lot of 90-degree angles in this building, and more than we should as far as the way it was installed, so the system is having to work too hard, basically, and it seems like every two or three months, we're having compressor issues, and that comes at a big cost. We just had a compressor issue, I believe, three weeks ago, and that price tag was about $13,000 to repair. And that price tag was about $13,000 to repair.
Any more questions? Comments?
Mr. Hathaway, what's the timeframe?
Well, CHA, and I'm sorry, that cost is $66,390. Wanted to be specific on that. The contractor is ready to get rolling. In fact, he's calling me, asking me about the status of his proposal. He anticipates that he could have a design prepared within two months. No, I'm sorry, six weeks, month and a half, for the design. I think, and that's what he's agreeing to, I think it can be done. And he's told me it can be done a lot quicker. He's already been to the site on a couple of occasions and have climbed up the attics and ceilings. So he's pretty familiar with this building already. So I do think it can be turned around quicker than contractually what he's agreeing to. The next step, once he, your actions today is not committing to a new HVAC system. This is only the design and engineering. Once this goes out to bid, I would definitely bring the bids to you prior to signing any contract for installation. So you will get another opportunity, you'll get an opportunity to review the bids and see the total cost of the project. And I'll be requesting, if we decide to move forward, an appropriation of funding for that action as well.
Any questions, any ready for motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Tiller?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute an agreement with CHA Companies and a form approved by the county attorney for engineering, procurement, and construction management services related to the installation of a new HVAC system in the county administration building. Further move to appropriate of $266,390 from capital fund balance for the proposed services.
Thank you, Supervisor Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn? And Ms. Page?
Aye. Thank you. We have public hearings scheduled, and we have to wait until seven o'clock for that. Would you all like to move on to our elected officials' report? Okay, all right. So, want to start with Mr. Tiller?
All right. Yes, I'm sure most people are aware of a service that was adopted by a woman named Jennifer Green Hensley, who adopted the Adopt a Senior page in New Kent. And fortunately, all 232 seniors were adopted in the county. So I think that was great. And I know she, I think, according to my wife, she had 793 members on her page for Adopt a Senior. So she's, she had her work cut out for her, making sure all these seniors were adopted, which did not include tuition and school down the road. So, yeah, that was really nice. And I think a lot of the seniors really appreciated getting a goodie bag.
Absolutely.
That's all.
I'm a senior, Mr. Tiller.
Yeah, that was something I meant to ask you a little while ago. What designates that senior?
Yeah, that's me. Absolutely. Mr. Steers?
Yes, Madam Chairman, the little, short little video, we just had conference with VCU. Takes a little getting used to, but last Tuesday, I was on the same tight video conference with the committee to select the Teacher of the Year Award for over three and a half hours. So I, I'm pretty good at this. Anyway, we had the four candidates interviewed and read their resumes. And it's amazing, the quality teachers that we have in this county and how they go way beyond the call of duty to, you know, to make sure that our kids are well taken care of. One teacher said she stands at the door every morning and greets every kid as they come in to know what kind of day they're having. Anyway, the decision was made, it was a tough decision. And the school board is meeting right now to announce the winner. So I will withhold the name to let them make, make it public. But just, you know, like I said last year, this is my ninth year, I think, to be on this committee. What an honor. But you really get to see that our teachers do not do it for the income, they do it for the outcome. So, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Lockwood?
Thank you, Ms. Page. I just wanted to announce that the County Clean Committee, since we weren't able to have our recycling event, we've rescheduled that for June 13th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So hopefully, if everything's allowed and can go as scheduled, that event will take place on June 13th. And we've come up with something of a, we haven't confirmed it yet, but if we're, for whatever reason, not able to do the recycling event that day, then kind of the outcome of the conversation we had about hiring a contractor to pick up the trash on the roads, we probably use the money that we have allocated for this as a grant and designate some areas that are real hotspots in the county and use that money. That way, we don't lose the grant next year. So hopefully, we'll be able to have the recycling event. That's a really successful event, so hopefully, we'll be able to take part in that. And then also, kind of as an aside to that, last month, on the 22nd, we had a trash pickup day in Barrensville. We cleaned up four miles of road and picked up over 40 bags of trash. We had 15 people participate. VDOT gave us some supplies, but most of it came from the collection bags that we have from the Clean County Committee. It's a kit, there's three of them available. It has the little pickup tools, it's got gloves, bags, everything you would need to do that yourself. It'll, it's enough supplies for up to 10 people. So if you're interested in cleaning up your own area, we have the supplies to do that. So I just wanted to put that out there. And then lastly, I mentioned Proclaiming Grace Outreach at our last meeting. They are continuing to operate their food pantry. There's a lot of folks in need in the community right now, and they're continuing to do that. The main engine for their revenue has been closed, that's the thrift spot in Barrensville. And for the last three weeks, they've been holding Facebook Live sales. You can go to Proclaiming Grace Outreach on their Facebook page, Thursdays at 7:00. And if you were fortunate enough to watch last week, they had a very special guest presenter, and that was our own chairman, Patricia Page. She took part in that sale and did a wonderful job in helping to promote that. So thank you very much.
My honor, my honor.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Just a couple of things I have, want to remind everybody. I know that this pandemic has, has taken over all of the, all of your time. It's on TV, radio, everywhere you turn. However, it's something else very important going on, and that is our 2020 sensors. And so we've gotten postcards, we've got mailing about the sensors, but we, we really need to do our due diligence through them, the state and federal. That's how we get some of our funding for fire and rescue and our emergency services. So please, ma'am, please, sir, if that card that they sent, that postcard, is still hanging around and has a little code on it, if not, I know they sent out a mailer, so please do your 2020 sensors. And then the other thing we are requesting is there was a need. And so we formed a strategic plan committee. And that committee, name for it is Envision New Kent. And Envision New Kent has a survey, and we want to know what you want your county to look like. And so you have the opportunity to voice what you want your county to look like by taking this survey. And so you can do it online. If you see it on Facebook, they have a Facebook page, you can go there and click on the link. You can request it, and I'm quite sure we can send it to you via email, or we'll send the link to you via email. But this is very important to get all of our residents. And, and we want to know, what do you want your county to look like? And so you have an opportunity to, to let us know. And so we asked, please, ma'am, please, sir, that you would fill that out. Another thing, we had the Zoom with VCU Health, and their ribbon cutting is on June the 1st. I, I have to say this, I, I do, I do think that we should give much appreciation to a former delegate, Chris Peace. And he worked very hard to, in collaboration with other lawmakers and also with our county, especially to get VCU Health here. I think that I speak on behalf of the board, and we have the consensus of the board that we would ask delegate Peace to be present at our ribbon cutting and be one of our speakers there. So I'm asking my board members here if we're in agreement with that. Absolutely. So we are so appreciative of all the things, not only that, but all the things that he's done for New Kent throughout his, his service on the General Assembly. And then we go to seniors who missed their prom and their, as we know, traditional graduation. On Facebook, anybody that has Facebook, they, the school and the fabulous teachers that we have in New Kent County put forth an effort to get yard, yard signs and put it in all the seniors' yards. They put pictures all over Facebook and just to congratulate our seniors on an achievement. I mean, some, some, that's the only graduation that you get, you know? If you're old like some of us on the board, you might not have had that little, yeah, come on. That kindergarten graduation, you might have had an eighth grade, who don't know? But anyway, how important is it for your high school graduation? And so my understanding that the school also has, they're working on a plan for a scaled-down graduation for our seniors. So we do applaud our seniors of New Kent High School and, and all of their teachers and also the school board in their support of trying to celebrate our seniors this year. And last but not least, I thank you to, since this virus has been going on, it has been, it has been an unknown journey for all of us. And so we got together with a committee that incorporated our emergency committee and led by Chief Opec, Rick Opec. And of course, we had our county administrator, Ms. Hathaway. We had Mr. Starr over there, our assistant county administrator. We had our media person, Ms. Krista, and always the supporter, Ms. Watkins. And our sheriff's department, Sheriff Joe, who skipped out on us tonight. But all of us came together, trying to work out a plan to keep not only our staff safe, but trying to keep our community safe. So as the governor said, we are encouraging social distancing. We will, I seriously doubt we will ever go back to what was normal. And they call it the new normal. Well, you can't have new and normal. So we have to make sure that we are hand washing and following all of the procedures that are set for us and keeping not only ourselves, but our families safe. So I applaud you, and I thank you so much because we've had extra meetings trying to find ways to keep our staff here safe and healthy and their families, as well as, as our residents. And so we're very appreciative of that, those that are working from home. I heard today through DSS that he thinks he's getting more work done out of his staff down there by working at home. We don't know, but we're just thankful for that. And hopefully, out of this virus, General Assembly will enter some more bills to, for funding for rural localities such as ourselves for rural broadband services. So again, thank you all for your efforts in participating in this and getting the word out and keeping each other safe on this journey that we're going through. And with that being said, that is all, Mr. Tiller, I saw you looking. Staff reports.
Madam Chair, have a handout.
Late last week, we received a proposed easement agreement, a right-of-way agreement from Dominion Virginia Power. This agreement is to provide electrical service to the Pinefort Park project, which is currently under construction. Normally, I would wait till the next agenda, but this is a time-sensitive matter that requires action now to keep the project on schedule. As you can see, there is a map on the last page of the handout. That map shows the locations of the proposed easements, which shows easements bringing power in from the adjacent new residential neighborhood adjacent to Pinefort Park.
Okay, and this has been reviewed by you, Tony Hathaway?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's correct. This is a, it's an easement that will bring power into the Pinefort Park. So it's a site development easement, and the easement agreement's pretty standard.
Do we have any questions, comments, motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Lockwood?
I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed right-of-way agreement in a form approved by the county attorney for the dedication of easements to provide electrical service to Pinefort Park.
Thank you, Supervisor Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Steers? Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn? Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Add one more handout.
You've been really busy, Mr. Hathaway.
The, the proposed handout is a request for quotes that I sent out to several engineering firms a couple of weeks ago. This quote is in, working with Mr. Steers, who's identified a need for lighting along Route 155 from at the exit 214 intersection to the intersection of Courthouse Road and Kentland Trail. This is an area that we've known that has been plagued with traffic accidents and, and other safety issues. And I've attached a map on the back of the handout that provides a summary of what we've requested design and engineering quotes for. As you can see, four lights, which consist of the blue dots around the exit 214 exit ramp, and four lights consisting of the blue dots at the intersection of Kentland Trail and Courthouse Road. And then we would like an option, the engineers to provide an option of what do it cost to provide lighting in between the two, two areas. I've asked for, as you can see in the request, I've asked for proposals to be submitted to me by May 7th at 2:00. And out of the four firms that I submitted proposals to, I received three proposals back. Um, the lowest proposal was for $9,400 and that was for Bowman and Associates. A firm that we currently have in, on call contract with for engineering services. Um, and a firm that we have worked with in the past on various other projects. Um, again, what we're requesting and what their proposal consists of is the engineering and design for the lighting. Um, their assistance through the VDOT land use permit process. Anytime you do work within a VDOT right of way, you need a land use permit. And then in their proposal, we didn't request it, but they also provided um, an option for assistance with the procurement process if we decide to move that, that route. Um, out of this process, we hope to gain uh, an estimate, a cost of what it would cost to provide lighting in, in this area. And that's, it's very difficult to do until you really take a good look at it. Uh, one of the challenges is going to be to bring electricity uh, to this area. Uh, we've also asked them to look at an option for solar lighting, if that's a more feasible option. Uh, there's a lot of variances here that could, could affect the price and um, therefore we feel that it's crucial to begin with the engineering and design to get an idea of the costs uh, so that we can consider moving forward with this project, whether or not we would want to move forward with the project. I am requesting, uh, if you choose to proceed, that funding be appropriated from our reserve for contingency funding line item.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Lockwood?
I, I guess my, my first question would be, this is not part of our current budget plan, is that correct?
No, it's, it's not. This is something that came about, an idea that came about after we've pretty much had been through that, that process.
I think that it would be, you know, for this to just kind of come up now, two weeks before we're wrapping up our budget, hopefully soon. And with all the uncertainty, I just don't know that this is the time for us to be spending more money. If anything, we should be pulling back as much as we can. And I, for as much as I'd like to see lights out there, um, you know, I, I think that we need to really take into consideration that the reason we have a budget is to work within it. And, you know, this would either be coming out of this year's budget or next year's budget. I mean, it, it, it should have been included in the budget if it was that important. And I'd like for us to, you know, not have these types of things where we need to appropriate money that's not on the schedule and on the agenda for the public to see beforehand. So I would have to say I'm, I'm not in agreement with this.
And as, as far as the timing, I'd just like to add, I know Ms. Steers and, and staff as well has been working with VDOT for other um, safety options and Transportation Safety Committee too. Uh, we've looked at roundabouts and other traffic calming and improvement measures. Um, and VDOT has pretty much has, has told us that there is no funding for it. Um, even though they've, I believe they've developed a preliminary design for a roundabout option there. So I think that led to us looking at other alternatives for safety improvements in, at that intersection.
Uh, Madam Chair.
You finished, Mr. Lockwood?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steers?
Uh, yes ma'am, um, first of all, this is not a Ron Steers project. This came from the Transportation Safety Commission meeting and our chairman is in the back of the room there. And I see another member here, it's also Mr. Benson. But um, this is a much needed project. It is a, it's been deemed as one of the most dangerous intersections in the county. And we don't need to go back to 2014 when three people were killed there. There have been some updated engineering, re-engineering done. Um, as far as being in this year's budget, this would come out of the contingency plan, our budget that we already have in, in the bank account. This is not adding anything to a, a new budget, it's not adding any new taxes. Um, it is taking money that we already have in the bank for much needed infrastructure. And especially when, uh, at nighttime, when you come through that intersection from the interstate to Kentland Trail. Uh, it is pitch dark, black, you can't see, and especially if it's raining. Um, I mean, there's been a lot of accidents there, a lot of mis, mis accidents. And um, I mean, I just, I think it's something that, you know, in, in the, the monies would come out of the capital fund, right?
Um, actually for the design and engineering, that would come out of our contingency operating budget. Uh, what you do as a special funds would cover it. Uh, in the event we move to construction, yes, that would be a capital improvement.
Which that money is already in the, in the bank account also. So it's not like we're adding something new to the budget and it's certainly not a luxury item.
I, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Steers. And uh, the fact that we have the money doesn't mean it was allocated to be spent. And with the difficulties that we know are coming our way, the money we have should be reserved for much needed things that we may not have the money we're planning on spending just for our routine way of life, our, our day to day expenses need to be covered. And I think that this is the time for us to be reserving capital, not spending it. That's just my opinion.
I, I see where you're coming from, Mr. Lockwood, but the capital funds are for capital improvement. It can't be just used for some other need somewhere in the county. It's designated for capital improvements.
I have a question. Um, have we um, contacted VDOT? Um, I, I saw the word solo, have we contacted VDOT or Dominion Energy to see if they would do this um, this study? Is this for a study or for, it's for the engineering design? Have we done a study that, do we know that lights there and actuality would um, would make it any safer, safer?
Uh, Madam Chair, to answer your question, I think a lighted street is much safer than a dark street at night. Uh, especially if it's raining. But uh, yes, we've been, VDOT sits in on our uh, Transportation Safety Commission meetings. And so they agree with this. They also said that VDOT does not have any funding, will not do any funding for streetlights. It's only for uh, traffic lights, but no, no uh, uh, streetlights. So basically, we were told if we were going to do it, it would be a, a county issue and would have to come from county funds. Thank you.
Okay, that answers one part, it doesn't answer the other part. The other part is, um, would VDOT do a study or would Dominion Energy do a study to um, to tell us the necessity or um, I mean, will it help? I mean, I know a, a lit street would help more than a dark street because we have uh, all of our exits in New Kent, I think except for one, has no lights. So um, and I understand accidents there as well, but I'm just asking, has it been a study or we just, we're just to decide if we want to go ahead and, and do uh, engineering and a design for this?
I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of VDOT doing a lighting study for that area. Um, it's something that I can check with Marshall. I don't know if it's been discussed in the Transportation Safety Committee meetings um, or not, but I could follow up with VDOT on that.
Well, I would imagine if they are not in the business of installing streetlights, they're not in the business of doing streetlight studies. Just my opinion. Uh, that's what part of this fund would be for, is to do the research. Uh, determine how many lights would be needed and solar as opposed to uh, electrical. Uh, that's the only way you can, you know, get a quote for the engineering to go forward with the project. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
Couple of things came up in that conversation, but not really to do with that. But speaking of lights, have we gotten an update on VDOT on the Marketplace Drive and Route 60? Have they?
Yes, um, actually I believe um, last week I received correspondence from Marshall Nguyen, who um, made me aware that the study is complete, looking at that one area at Marketplace Drive. And um, they've determined that the warrants were met for lighting. Um, Marshall is recommending uh, to do another study of the entire corridor. Uh, to see what other improvements in addition to lighting uh, can address the safety concerns along that, that um, Route 60. In fact, he's looking at from the, he would like to do a study from um, intersection of New Kent Highway and Route 60 to the Star Motel. Um, so I think that's what they're gearing up on now. But yes, we did get um, a response back and yes, the warrants are met for light.
All right, so when you say to go down to the Star Motels, that to possibly lower the speed limit down to there?
I, I, I think the type of study that Marshall is looking at, they're going to look at speed limit as well as other fiscal improvements um, along that, that stretch of road.
Right, and another issue came up in that conversation about traffic circles. Has anything moved forward with the?
612.
612?
Yep.
Traffic circle?
Actually, I was going to report on that next. Uh, you know, we, we have our land use permit from VDOT. Uh, we have a bid package. Um, originally when I got the bid package, I sent it out and unfortunately, I didn't get a good response from contractors. But I think times are changing now, the economy is changing now. Um, and I am working with a contractor who's come back to me and said he is interested in the project. Um, so I hope to have a contract to you at your work session or proposed contract to you at your work session.
So Mr. Tiller, all of that, you don't have anything to say about this engineering and the design? I mean, I'm just asking.
As you referred to me a little while ago as one of the older people in the county that actually had a graduation service. When those things came up, while it was fresh on my mind.
I got you, Mr. Tiller. I got some notes will be in myself.
I see Mr. Lockwood and Mrs. Steers' point of view on that, um, about the lights being there and the possibility of spending the money to do that. Uh, I think at this time, I'm, I'll have to agree with Mr. Lockwood on that.
Um, my ask would be that we check with VDOT and also um, even Dominion Energy, since they would be getting some money out of this. And um, see if they would indeed do a study. At least we would have some kind of idea of how much it would cost. We um, even if we don't have the idea of how much it costs, we would get an idea of how effective it would be and if it is indeed needed and their thoughts on it. So that, that's my ask. Thank you, sir.
Would it be appropriate to ask Rosies to be involved in that process? On the Colonial Downs, I mean, it's their entranceway, it's, you know, obviously not a lot of traffic going through there now. But, you know, they're a large contributor to the reason that intersection is so dangerous and, and nothing other than people coming and going from their business, so, you know, but, you know, they, they are certainly a factor in all this. So I would say it would be in everybody's best interest to talk to those parties.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To answer Mr. Lockwood, I've already spoken with uh, Colonial Downs about the same situation. And they said that at this time, they're not willing to put any money in towards anything at the intersection because they feel like they've been a good partner to New Kent. They've um, kept all the employees employed through all this um, pandemic. And uh, served 30,000 free meals in the, in and around the community and stuff like that. And they are not interested in doing anything uh, at the intersection. So to answer your question, I'll probably ask them.
Well, thank you to both of you. I think that if we do that, we'll check um, and then we can get a follow up. So maybe we'll have that by work session if we want to discuss it later on then. All right. Oh, you got one more? Oh, here we go.
One more, I, um, I'd just like to make our residents aware that on Friday, May 15th.
Is your mic on?
Okay, um, one more announcement, on Friday, May 15th, from 9:00 AM to 11:30, uh, the Health Department will be conducting COVID-19 testing um, in Charles City County, but this is for New Kent residents also. Uh, the testing will be at 8200 Lock Curry Road, Providence Forge, Virginia, which is the Chickahominy Indian Tribal Center. Um, you are required to pre-register by May 14th at 12:00 PM. Uh, we have contact information on this event, um, on our Facebook page. And I would ask that you go to that, um, go to the county's Facebook page for more information on that. Um, I will also say that we're working with the Health Department and the Health Department is working on coordinating a separate, another testing event in New Kent County as, as well. Um, but the event this Friday is also for New Kent County residents.
Is there any charge to people in getting these tests?
Um, I don't believe there is a charge. In fact, I'm, I'm looking at the advertisement that the Health Department has prepared. Um, no, there, there's no charge for that.
No. The chief said it was no charge.
Okay.
What were the hours again?
Uh, the hours are from 9:00 to 11:30.
And you have to call by May 14th for an appointment?
May 14th at 12, by 12:00 PM on May 14th, uh, to pre-register. Okay, that concludes my remarks.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Um, it is now 7:08, so we can um, we can commence with our public hearing. Uh, first public hearing is rezoning application, ZM01-20 Theresa Agner, rezoning request ordinance 0, And we will have Ms. Kelly La Duke from, uh, she's our planning director and it's an applicant, so.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm just going to give a brief staff report and then Ms. Agner's here also for the presentation. Okay, Ms. Theresa Agner has requested the rezoning of approximately 5.8 acres of land from A1 to R1, single family residential. The subject property is located at 10390 Carriage Road in Providence Forge. The purpose of her request is to allow her property to be subdivided one time. Please refer to the proper statement that was submitted with her rezoning request. The future land use map designates this area of the county as rural lands. The designation of rural lands is the most extensive designation on the land use map, representing the majority of land contained within the county. Rural lands are intended to include low density housing in cluster or open space developments or on large lots not intended to be served by public utilities. This parcel was zoned R1 in the past and is directly adjacent to several R1 zoned properties, ranging in size from 0.91 acres to 5.8 acres. The application was reviewed by VDOT, the Sheriff's Department, Fire and Rescue, and the Environmental Division. None of these agencies had any comments. This rezoning is not anticipated to contribute negatively to the county services. When reviewing this application, staff and the planning commission have made the following findings. One, the proposed use and zoning change is not prejudicial to the character of the neighborhood. Two, the proposed use and zoning change will not adversely affect the general plans for the physical development of the county as embodied in the comprehensive plan. And three, the proposed use and zoning change will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or the general neighborhood, nor will it impair the value of buildings or property. nor will it impair the value of buildings or property in surrounding areas. Given the stated findings, the zoning change and addition of one residential lot via the proper statement will not change the rural nature of this area of New Kent County. Staff recommends approval of application ZM-01-20. The Planning Commission considered this application during their electronic meeting on April 20th, and they voted nine to zero to forward a favorable recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Agner would like to give a presentation, I'll be here to answer any questions.
Madam Chairman and the Board, thank you for giving me the time to speak. And thank you, Kelly. And I'd like to compliment the county on superb performance by the Planning Department and county staff. They have been, in times like this, enormously helpful and almost as expeditious as if they were in the office, you know, normal time. So thank you for having such a great staff.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Teresa Agner. I live at 10390 Carriage Road, where I have been a New Kent resident for 32 years, almost. I'm here before you tonight as this 32-year resident requesting final approval of the rezoning application, which was 100% approved by the Planning Department and the Planning Commission. This property was born in the early 1970s out of a timber tract owned by the Mountcastle family, who subdivided into about eight parcels. And this property is surrounded on three sides by R1. I would like to redesignate this property R1 because I had changed it to A1 in the early 2000s trying to make a go at some agricultural pursuits, which I finally determined that the property is just really not large enough for such endeavors. So at this time, I have paid all the necessary fees for the application to take it back with its brothers and sisters as R1. And I am proffering to subdivide it only once into this one lot, which has an additional benefit. For years at the county, we've always complained that our young people leave and because they have no affordable housing to live in, they can't afford to live in New Kent County. And the young lady who has given me a deposit to purchase this lot should be able to subdivide it. Will be coming back here from Sandston where she had moved and she gets to be close to her grandmother who lives a mile away. So here's an opportunity to help one young person, you know, come back. She works here in New Kent County, but lives in another county. It'd be nice to have somebody be able to live and work in their own county again. That's really all I had to say. Again, I really appreciate the opportunity. I hope everyone will support me in this and vote yes to rezone this back to R1. Is there any questions? All right, thank you again for your time. I hope everyone is well and healthy at home and thanks again.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on Ms. La Duke? Okay, at this time, we are opening a public hearing. Can we? Okay, thank you. Okay, the only person we had was Ms. Agner and she has already spoken. So we will close the public hearing. Any questions, discussion by the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Steers.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just would like to say that Ms. Agner is a constituent of mine and I fully support her endeavor to have this changed back to R1. And I think it serves for what my beliefs are that, and I'm sorry, I got choked up here. But, you know, it goes back to what I always say. I believe in people who should have personal property rights as long as they don't impose on the rights of other people. And in this case here, it certainly does not impose on the rights of any of her neighbors or anybody because they are all R1. And so I would just like to state that I fully support her in her endeavor.
Thank you, Mrs. Steers. Anyone else? Mr. Lockwood?
Madam Chair, I would also just like to say that, you know, just looking at the map and reading up what Kelly.
I can't hear you, sir.
Just looking at the map and listening to what Kelly has and what's in our packet, it would seem that this property is zoning, rezoning back to R1 is consistent with the surrounding properties and wouldn't change the nature of the neighborhood any. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't go forward with it.
More comments, discussions, questions? Your motion?
Madam Chair. Mr. Steers? By all means.
Madam Chair, I move to accept ordinance 0-03-20.
Thank you, Mrs. Steers. Ms. Lockwood, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
I'll say aye.
Mr. Evelyn? Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Allen. I don't hope that you can propose amendments.
Sorry, propose amendments to Appendix A fees of New Kent County Code. And that is you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you, you have. Before you, you have proposed amended, proposed amendments to public utility fees as well as our refuse and recycling fees. We discussed this at our work session last month. As part of our budget planning process, we have generally supported. We haven't taken action on it yet and no action is required tonight. We only have to conduct a public hearing at this point. But we've had discussions about a 1% reduction in water and sewer user fees. Those fees are calculated and before you for consideration tonight. We've also discussed increasing our meter fees to cover the cost of our actual cost of purchasing the meters. And that's the sole purpose of the increase in the meter fees. And that is a one-time fee that's due at the installation of the meters. On the bottom, you have refuse and recycling. We're proposing to decrease that cost from $20 per appliance. And those are for appliances that include freon in them. We're proposing to reduce that to $10 per appliance. And a big reason for that is we've recently signed a new contract for the disposal of those appliances. And that contract is cheaper. Our cost is $10 per appliance. So we're just passing on our true cost to the residents of the county.
Any questions on this, Mr. Hathaway? Thank you, we are opening a public hearing. If you want to bring the other ones, next time you can. Thank you. No one has signed up for the public hearing, so we will close the public hearing at this time. Do any questions, discussions, or comments from the board? Ms. Hathaway? And this is for new connections, or is it? When you talk about the meters?
That's correct, that's for new connections.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to item six, which is a public hearing for our New Kent County budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we have a public hearing on the proposed budget for FY '21. As you all are aware, this has been a very interesting and challenging process, especially keeping in mind what we're all facing economically with the COVID-19 pandemic. Because of that pandemic, it's challenged us to go back to the drawing board, really, to keep in mind that we have a lot of residents right now that are unemployed and that are struggling financially. And as a result, we've looked at some of our proposed expenditures and we've made some significant cuts to the original proposal that was presented to you on March 9th. The proposed budget that you have for you for FY '21 totals $75,269,474. We are proposing a 79 cent tax rate. Our current tax rate is 82 cents. On March 9th, I proposed an 82 cent tax rate. That has been revised and we're now proposing a 79 cent tax rate. I still want to be clear, though, because this isn't a reassessment year. And we're required to equalize our tax rate. The equalized tax rate is 76 cents. This is still a tax increase, but it's now no longer a 6 cent tax increase to what was proposed in March 9th. It's now 3 cents. Our current rate is 82 cents, but when you take into account the equalized rate, it is a tax increase. The next slide is a breakdown of expenditures by department. As you can see, schools is roughly half our budget. And this slide isn't for shock value, it's just so the residents can see how their money is being spent. A school system being roughly 50% of a locality's budget is no different from most localities in the state of Virginia. I want to talk a little bit about the changes that we've made to the original budget presentation. The original budget presentation included a general fund budget of $48,229,618. We've had some increases and decreases since March 9th. First, we've had an increase of $315,000 from the Commissioner of Revenue through the appeals process. When we go through a reassessment process, we always set aside money for appeals. And those are adjustments that are made after the residents receive their assessments. They have an opportunity to meet with the Commissioner of Revenue and the Commissioner of Revenue has the discretion to make adjustments. We've set aside actually about $550,000 for that appeals process. And we've concluded that process and we have $315,554 remaining. So that is additional money that we now have for our budget. As you can recall from our budget retreat, I have proposed, once we know the true number, let's look at salary increases for our staff. Since COVID-19 pandemic, I am not proposing that this should be utilized for salary increases for staff. In fact, I'm proposing no salary increases for staff for the FY '21 budget. We've also had a revenue adjustment of $9,204 and this is from our revenues received from Circuit Court and DMV Selects, as well as a little bit of sales tax. But I believe the sales tax was a negative, actually. But Circuit Court and DMV made it a positive number. We have, we have figured in a 2% reduction in tax revenues as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And if you look at the bottom, these are the revenues that we're focusing on. Our real estate, personal property tax. I know some people have asked me, well, those are assessed numbers, that's an actual numbers, people have to pay it. Well, what we've done in our budget, we normally budget in a 97% collection rate with real estate and personal property. We've reduced that to a 95% collection rate, taking into account the unemployment rate being an all-time high right now in New Kent County. We also anticipate less revenues from business license, sales tax, mill's tax. And as we're starting to see impacts in the development community, decreases in our recordation taxes as well. That 2% reduction in tax revenues totals $738,327. We've also, by, as I mentioned previously, reducing the real estate rate from 82 cents to 79 cents. That's a cost of $931,125. So therefore, the new general fund budget revenue was now $46,884,924. Want to discuss some of the cuts that we've made since March 9th. Because we have deferred the construction of the school for at least six months, a period of at least six months, we've had to reconfigure how we budget that money. I know it looks like from this slide that we've taken away, that we've cut $2,45,000 and that we've cut $1,452,000 from the budget. That's truly actually not the case. Because if you look at the bottom, there is a school set aside of $3,150,574. What we were originally proposing was to do away with the school set aside anticipating a borrowing next year. And then we would appropriate the money that we would be setting aside for schools into those items at the top, which is your operating costs for the new elementary school and your debt financing, your principal and interest for the new elementary school. So it's really not a cut of $3,497,000. But it is a decrease. If you add the top numbers and subtract this fiscal year set aside, it is a decrease in our budget of $346,426. That is the additional amount of money that would have been required to move forward with the new elementary school. So by delaying the new elementary school, we have actually saved money. And we saved $346,426. If you move down to the fourth item, well, fourth line, economic development transfer of $225,000. This was originally proposed in our operating budget for an economic development project that we've been working for some time. We're now proposing not to utilize our operating funds to cover that expenditure. We're proposing to use capital funding to cover that cost. So therefore, there was a savings in our operating budget. We've decided to flat fund schools, which we've discussed with the schools. That's a savings, a cut of $200,000. We've made some changes to our health insurance program, which presented a savings of $200,000 as well by eliminating the top tier. by eliminating the top-tier insurance option that we provide and adding another lower tier. And I think that that has a couple of benefits to it. Yes, it saved the county money, but it's also have provided some of our employees with a much cheaper insurance option, too. So I really think we moved in the right direction with that one. We eliminated three positions from our original recommendation for the sheriff's office, which was six positions. So now we're proposing three positions, which is actually one new position and two upgrades of two existing part-time positions. The sheriff's office had developed a decompression program to deal with and address some of the salary compression issues that they were experiencing. That cost was $70,000, and unfortunately, we had to eliminate that expenditure as well. Going through all the department budgets, and during the first white, first review of this, when we presented to you back in March 8, we had already made a good number of cuts to what we had, what had been proposed. And I really do believe that we presented back in March 8, March 9, a very lean budget to you, but we've went back and reviewed, we've taken another look at department budgets and have made an additional $67,000 worth of cuts. I was proposing to hire an Assistant Chief of Technology, starting July 1, and we are proposing now that we push that back to January 1. Therefore, during FY21, we'd only be responsible for half of the salary and benefits for that position. And then we did have a couple of additions as well, other personnel additions and reductions totaling $1,775. And I believe that that just comes from us getting better numbers on some of the benefit costs that are involved in staffing. So there is an increase there. And transfers to other funds dealing also with benefits, an increase of $4,562. Back when I presented back in March 9, we didn't have all of the true costs from a lot of our benefits and insurances, and we've gotten those actual numbers since then. I've mentioned the school set aside of $3.1 million. That gives you a revised general fund expenditure of $46,884,000, which is a reduction of $1,4,605. Revised personnel actions. The top three items, the fire department, 12 new positions for the SAFER grant. That's a commitment that we've already made, so that is included. The sheriff's office, I just mentioned, I've reduced the number of six new deputies to three. The Commonwealth Attorney, new Assistant Commonwealth Attorney position. That is actually a state mandated position. The General Assembly last year passed a bill that requires communities that utilize body-worn cameras to hire a new Assistant Commonwealth Attorney position, primarily to address the man-hours that it's taken to review the video footage. So we've included that cost in the FY21 budget. Also associated with the 12 new fire positions is the advanced life support. This is an additional salary that we give to employees that have their advanced life support certifications, their ALS certifications. They get a salary increase. That's a very difficult and lengthy process to get that certification, and we want to encourage our staff to have that. With the advanced life support certification, they can administer medicines and procedures that only individuals with that certification can do, and those procedures can be lifesaving. I've talked about the information technology position, pushing the Assistant Chief position back to January 1. Parks and Recreation. You all know that we have a new park under construction, and actually, the grass is growing now and getting pretty tall. Currently, we have two part-time individuals to manage all of our grass cutting at all of our park facilities. And it's a struggle for those two individuals to keep up, working on a part-time basis. So I really do feel that a full-time position is needed. We also have a salary adjustment, oh, for the Administration Department. Two salary adjustments are proposed, not for me, but for staff within the Administration Department. And I believe that's very well-deserving. In the Fire Department, we have a permanent battalion chief position. Right now, that position is occupied on an acting duty. We have an acting battalion chief, and the person that's currently in that position has done an excellent job, and I feel is very well-deserving of being made the permanent battalion chief. So therefore, salary increases included there. Commonwealth Attorney, VRS, and our Treasurer, VRS, for constitutional officers. We have an ongoing policy where we, the county contributes 5% towards their VRS costs, and that's the Virginia Retirement System. We currently do that for the other two constitutional officers. We have two new constitutional officers, as per this past election, and I'm proposing that we treat them as our other constitutional officers and other staff as well, because that is a benefit that we provide for county staff. Social Services, a small market adjustment for the Director, just to bring his salary in line with the Assistant Director and other staff within his department. And we are doing the same thing for Captain Position in Fire and Rescue. The total for the proposed personnel actions is $1,224,829. Again, the lion's share of those proposed personnel actions are based on either state mandates or commitments that we've already made through the acceptance of grants. Personnel actions that I've eliminated. I've mentioned the sheriff's position and the decompression. I've talked about the IT position. There was a position, a part-time safety coordinator, to assist us with our OSHA guidance and requirements. Unfortunately, it's still a position I believe in, but unfortunately, that position was eliminated. A part-time permit technician was also eliminated to assist in the Building Department. There was two promotions, a promotion, I'm sorry, in the Environmental Department and a promotion to environmental planner, to senior planner. I still believe that the promotion is deserving, but due to the budget situation, I'm recommending that we do not proceed with that promotion in FY21. Also, in the Economic Development Department, there was a salary increase that I'm proposing that we do not proceed with. Although I will say, with that position, Matt has done an excellent job for us in the economic development front, and he is in the process of getting his economic development certification. And once he receives that certification, there is funding available to provide him with the salary increase, and that's what we do for all employees that goes through certification processes. And I do that to encourage people to improve their education and knowledge, which ultimately will help serve the community. There is also a planning promotion as well, which there, I'm no longer recommending that we move forward with. So it's a total of $357,447 in personnel cuts that I'm proposing. Employee compensation and benefits. I've also mentioned previously, I'm proposing no salary increases for staff this year. I think it's unfortunate. I was hoping to be in a position to do that, but due to the economy, I think it is the right decision to make, to not move forward with salary increases. Health insurance rates. Our health insurance provider gave us a 6.6% increase, but due to the changes that we've made in our health insurance plans, we were able to do away with that increase and not have to pass any additional costs on to our employees. In fact, we've passed additional options to our employees to save money with their health insurance. VRS retirement rate, that's a rate, Virginia Retirement System, that we don't control, and it's all based on how they invest their funding. We do, we've been told that there will be an increase from 9.95% to 10.94%. Health insurance credit rate is a retirement benefit that we offer. No change in that. With VRS, group life insurance, there is a small increase in the group life insurance that we offer to employees. And we're still waiting on our VML auto and liability insurance renewal information. We don't anticipate any huge increases in that, but we don't have the actual numbers as of yet. Major capital projects. We've been over this several times, so I won't go through each individual item. But if you have any questions, please, please let me know. And just for the public, this is not all of the capital projects, but we've highlighted the more expensive projects that are proposed in the FY21 budget. And for the public, the proposed budget is on the county's website. If you go to our website and go to the Financial Services webpage and click on Budget, you can download the entire proposed budget for FY21. Yes?
Is the bus replacements for the schools?
Yes, sir.
I understand, you know, we've got a timeline that we go by, that we follow. I mean, couldn't we put that off for a year, since our buses weren't used for half a year? I mean, has that been considered to defer that for a year?
Well, following the guidance that the schools follows, which is, school buses should be replaced every 15 years. There are, that's about six buses that are due for replacement. I don't believe we get any credit, because they were only used half a year. They look at the year of manufacture and the insurance, our insurance companies, and the guidance that we get from the Department of Education all says 15 years buses should be replaced.
So that's based on the year, not the mileage?
That's correct. That's correct. And we do a good job. I mean, these buses are out on the road every single day, and to keep a vehicle 15 years, I think, you know, yes. Our maintenance department stays busy, but they do a good job. This slide just shows you where we stand as far as our capital budget. The total capital projects totaled $3,784,819. Only 2.4, 2.5 million of that actually comes from our CIP fund. We do receive sources of revenue from state and federal grants, as well as proffers. Our Public Utility Fund. I know our next public hearing is for our Public Utilities budget, so if I can say a few words on this now, I can. We still have to conduct two separate public hearings, but you won't have to see me in front of you as much. So I'll go forward with the Public Utilities now. Again, we have proposed a 1% reduction in rates, which I think is huge, actually. I know it's a small reduction, but when you consider that this is the first rate reduction since the establishment of our utility service, I think that's huge. And on top of that, for many years, there's been continual increases to our utility rate. So we're finally able to turn it in the right direction, and as our system grows, we can look to doing further reductions to our rates. Connection and availability fees. No increase to the actual connection and availability fees, but I did mention previously, the meter fee that we charge, there is a proposed increase for that, which is separate from the connection and availability fee. Bottoms Bridge Service District Tax Rate. And I think this is another huge, huge feat that we've accomplished by, for the first time, being in a position to reduce that utility rate and not looking at increasing that rate. It started at 5 cents per 100 of real value for the Bottoms Bridge Service District when it was adopted, and it's gradually grown to 15 cents. And we're looking at reducing that by 2 cents in the next fiscal year. Again, this is largely attributed to growth of the system. The FY21 Public Utility Budget totals $5,806,413. In comparison to this current fiscal year 20 budget, it is a reduction. The fiscal year 20 budget was $9,318,901. The difference in that was capital projects. For this current fiscal year, we approved the capital project to tie in, to connect the Farms in New Kent Water System to the Kentland Water System, and that work is underway as we speak. FY21 Capital Projects totaled $853,100. As of last year, that total was $4.6 million, and again, that was the cost of the water connection project. So there is a reduction of $3.8 million. We've also been over this, the Public Utilities CIP projects, which total $853,100. So I won't go over those individually. These are mostly projects that we've all discussed before. I have gotten questions, though, on the AWIA and resiliency assessment to actually what that involved. This is a federal requirement. I believe every five years, we have to do a risk and resiliency assessment of our water system, and that's a five-year requirement. It is due for us to submit that by June 30 of next year. So therefore, we've included funding to hire a consultant to do the study. I'd just like to include by saying thank you for the support from the board. This has been a more difficult budget than in previous years. Just when you think that you have a recommendation that you feel good about and ready to present, the whole world changed on us, and we had to go back to the drawing board. But I thank you for your support and assistance in putting this recommendation together. I also truly want to thank our budget team. We have a great budget team with Rebecca and Larry, Justin, and Mrs. Page. We've put in a lot of hours to put this together for you, and I thank them all. No action is required tonight. By code, by state code, we have to wait 14 days to take action on a budget, on our budget, after we've conducted the public hearing. So I would propose that we continue with the public hearing and we reconsider action. and we reconsider action on the budget at our May twenty-seventh work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. Dan, will you bring us, you can bring us the rest of the... Have a good night, Dan. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. So no one signed up for the public hearing for the budget, so we will close the public hearing. Do we have any comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may, um, I had so many papers in front of me. I, I didn't bring it up when I came up to you before. With the COVID-nineteen, um, crisis and we are, um, encouraging people to, to stay at home, we have asked that if any residents have any comments regarding the budget, uh, please submit those to us. And, and we would make the board a, aware of those comments. And actually, we stated that we would read, uh, those comments if they decided not to come. So I do have three comments, uh, for the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And all of the board members do have a copy of these comments?
That's correct. The first comment is by, is from, received on, uh, today at eleven fifty-two from Ponwadi Kero. Dear Madam Chairman and New Kent County Board of Supervisors, thank you for giving me the opportunity to offer my opinion. From the county's budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it seems that New Kent County does not expect much of an impact from the global crisis we are facing. As a matter of fact, the revenues from property taxes are expected to be increased, uh, from the previous year. I am very grateful for the residents who are paying and will be able to pay taxes to sustain functions of the county government. Unfortunately, my business is in the event industry and does not have that luxury. The whole industry has been decimated. It was the first industry to go under and will be the last, last to recover until people feel safe to gather in groups, again, without thinking that they are going to bring the disease back to their loved ones at home or get affected themselves. According to health experts, it may be a few years before the crisis is over. This does not include the effects, the after-effects. In the meantime, my husband and I are redirecting our efforts towards a new online business. We are conducting our meetings on Zoom, which sometimes are cut off because we have, because of not having enough bandwidth. The county does not have broadband internet infrastructure for the majority of the land area of the county, including our area. Kids cannot do their homework from home. The use of telework, work from home and telehealth are bigger than ever for vulnerable groups of people. Before they can accept visitors in their home, the internet communications will be the safest way for them to see and talk to their loved ones. For the schools, it will be very expensive or ineffective to bring kids back to the schools before the crisis is under control by adequate testing, contact tracing, quarantine and vaccinations. It is unacceptable to let kids, teachers and staff be part of developing herd commun- immunity, I'm not, that's probably a typo. The flu pandemic in nineteen eighteen ended in herd immunity. But with the cost of one-third of the world population being affected and fifty million deaths, this leads me to wonder if we may not need a new traditional school at all. Online classes combined with smaller in-person classes may be the way to go. The kids will be safer at home, safe from epidemics and also safe from mass shootings and even less vulnerable to bullying. The new school construction project could be reduced dramatically. Please consider putting investments for broadband infrastructure in the budget as an essential item. It is for our future. Last but not least, I hope the county officials have a plan to handle the shortfall from the crisis wisely and give thanks to the county property owners by not raising their property taxes. The supervisors have, have stewardship to look after welfare of the county, including financial welfare. The county's financial rating is very important to the future borrowing of the county. Thank you very much for doing your work selflessly. May God's love continue to guide you in every step you take. I also received comments from Charles Kero, um, which were very similar to the comments that I just read. Actually, he made the exact same point, so I'll just, they are husband and wife, husband and wife. So you have those comments before you, and because they are pretty much at the same point, they are these same points. I'll move on to the third and last comments that we received, and that was from Mrs. Sandy Gaudier. Uh, that was received today at nine fifty-seven AM. Good morning, John. Below, you'll find a brief listing of several other articles I spoke of last week. It is a particular note that many localities have been making financial cuts and programming adjustments to their budgets for well over a month. In truth, I only went back thirty days when putting this together. And when I say putting this together, I included in that email were, uh, links to other news articles from other localities. Other localities reacted even sooner, and I certainly have not captured even a fraction of those who are hard at work making cuts. The monetary impacts of the COVID-nineteen shutdowns are a reality we all must live with. I'm anxiously, I'm anxious to hear some strategies from New Kent County Board of Supervisors to dealing with it. Kicking the can down the road is not a strategy that accomplishes much, except to make the ultimate necessary cuts even harsher. County governments exist to take care of the needs of the sedentary, sedentary. Some believe we must save all our county government jobs and projects. I feel we must make some hard decisions to safeguard the financial security of New Kent County. We must do what is necessary. Exactly fiduciary responsibilities to ensure we don't waste a penny of tax dollars is required now more than ever. Thank you for your consideration of this communication. Respectfully, Sandy Gaudier.
So those comments will be, um, made a part of our, um, of our minutes. So will be placed on record. And we thank, um, the Keros and Ms. Gaudier for, um, their comments. One thing I can say is that truly New Kent, um, is a county that, um, that are good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. And, um, as Mr. Hathaway, um, showed appreciation for those that worked on the budget requests, I think that, um, even though other localities publicized their, their cuts, that we were working diligently and not to, um, not to exclude Mr. Larry Clark, who I think worked tirelessly as well with Rebecca and, um, and some of these cuts. And we made cuts knowing that, um, we were cutting out much-needed positions and in hope of our counter, of our economy bouncing back. We are going through unforeseen and uncertain times. And so we are doing just like the other localities that have made much larger cuts, and that's because their budget is much larger than ours, thank goodness. But because we have been such good stewards, uh, we didn't have to make, um, any further cuts. So we thank you for your presentation. I think that you stated that you'd already given the hearing for the public utilities?
Uh, I've given my presentation. We'll have to conduct... We'll have to conduct a separate public hearing, but I have no further, uh, comments to add on that item.
Okay. So, um, so thank you for that. The next public hearing is the New Kent County Public Utilities Budget. You did that?
Yes.
Okay. And so nobody signed up for that? Also, uh, further is re-adoption of emergency ordinance, uh, zero two dash two zero. And that is you, Mr. Hathaway.
Sorry, should have stayed up here.
Oh, we closed the public, we did before he came back. So do I have to close it again after you read the comments? We closed the public hearings for, um, for the utilities? Because no one's signed up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, before you, you have ordinance O dash zero two dash twenty. And this is to allow for temporary changes in certain deadlines and to modify public meetings and public hearing practices and procedures to permit continuity of operations during the COVID-nineteen pandemic disaster. You adopted a very similar ordinance in March. But when that ordinance was adopted, um, we put a sixty-day expiration date on that ordinance. We're almost at that sixty-day period, I believe, that would come up again. I believe this, if, March twenty-fifth, it would expire in May twenty-fifth, uh, which is before our next meeting, um, our work session. So therefore, we're asking you to extend, um, extend the ordinance for an additional four months. And by state code, um, we can only enact an ordinance for a period of six months currently. That may all change, um, but that would require some approvals at the state level, uh, to, to amend the state code. But right now, six months is the longest, um, we can enact such an ordinance. This ordinance is what allows us to meet electronically. And I know that even though the board, uh, we're not meeting electronically now, there are public meetings occurring, uh, within some of your commissions and committees, um, that are meeting electronically, and we're able to do that under this, this ordinance. So I do feel that it's, it's very important to, to continue.
Okay. Any questions, comments? No one signed up, the public hearing is open. No one signed up. Dan is at home. We'll close the public hearing. Does the board have any, um, comments or suggestions or questions? If not, can we have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt O dash zero two dash two zero, an emergency ordinance to assure continuity of government during the current COVID-nineteen pandemic disaster.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Evelyn, Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Thank you. Um, we did electoral, other business? Okay, do we have appointments delegated by district? Mr. Lockwood? Mr. Sears?
Uh, Madam Chair, I have no appointments.
Mr. Tiller?
Uh, I have none.
And I have none. Okay, appointment's not delegated by district. Mr. Lockwood?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I do. I've moved to appoint Reagan Wright as a member of the Airport Advisory Commission to complete a four-year term beginning December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Okay. Mr. Sears?
Uh, Madam Chair, I have no appointments.
Mr. Tiller?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn and Ms. Page?
Aye.
There's no other business. And before we adjourn, um, surely we missed one of our board members tonight. I can't say that enough. And also to let the county know that we are, we had a meeting today and we will be meeting and plans to, um, adjust and to reopen the county. We are grateful for the, uh, the patience of the public as we have, uh, closed their building and it will remain closed to the public until further notice. Did find out today, for those that called, that DMV has extended their closure at least another week. And the other good news is, well, that's not good news, but a piece of good news is that House Bill, um, fourteen fifty-one, which is Transportation Authority, which hopefully we will have enough money to soon, um, think about in widening I sixty-four, um, through New Kent County. So that bill did pass, so it is a small but a large, um, step forward to getting our interstate widened through New Kent County. With that being said, if there are no other, um, no other comments, adjournment. Our meeting schedule for our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be at six PM on Monday, June the eighth, twenty twenty. The next work session will be at nine o'clock AM on Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Both will be held here in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. Meeting, oh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board?
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn? Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Meeting adjourned.